Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to thank all of you guys for coming and seeing us and for those that will be seeing the streaming, welcome and we're glad you joined us. So again, as we enter to December, it's that time of the year where we should be thankful for the things we have and I think we're all happy so far for our health and the fact that we're able to attend. So good things do come. I think, I still think, even though we're closed, I still think it's in order that we do our pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. So Tommy, if you would, may I send your moment of silence?
That moment of silence, usually we do it for veterans, hospital people, whatever, but our whole country and world is in a problem right now. So let's think of them and especially, I've got a sister that's in intensive care in Asheville and she works for the school system, so we keep her in our prayers and appreciate bowing her head to help him hold his silence.
If you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you Tommy. Everyone here, please be seated. First action from the board will be the approval of the minutes. I think those were sent out with previously when the agenda was sent out, we have meetings from our regular meeting on November 16th and two special called meetings, one on November 30th and the other one on December the 7th. All the board members have had a chance to review those, are there any changes, corrections, questions? Nope. Here none, I'm going to take a motion to approve. A motion to approve, do I hear a second? Second. All in favor here, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Missy, yeah. John just told me each one, I have to come to you separately, so Missy, your vote was aye?
Yes.
Hillary?
Aye.
Good, very good, thank you. Does that work, John? All right. Next is the adoption of our agenda. Everyone's had a look, had a chance to look at those over, are there any additions to the agenda? Dr. Baldwin?
No, sir.
Board members?
Move, we accept as presented.
Saying none, we have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Good, second. All in favor, somebody saying aye. Aye. And again, Missy, you and Hillary, you have to vote, Missy?
Yes, aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And I'm not picking on y'all if you have, but if you have a question about this, jump on Mr. Dr. Henny over here, he's the one making me do this, all right? Spotlight on people's programs, I don't think there's any at this time, Dr. Baldwin?
No, sir.
All right. Public comments, I'm not aware of any emails that was received, is that correct, Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
Do you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on through informational items, all the board members have your packet, the information from Mr. Jetter concerning to transfers. They're using names, looks like we have some that are doing so, I would entertain a motion that we approve the transfer request as submitted. So move. Have a motion, we approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have two seconds, aye, so all in favor, first I'll go, Missy, your vote?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Board members here, all in favor, aye. Aye, very good, thank you all. Next overnight out of district trip request, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just want to give the board a heads up that there will be some out of area overnight trips that our schools would like to attend and most of these or a lot of these are going to be sporting contests, they're going to be regional playoffs or state playoffs. The high school athletic association is working on a different set of parameters for regional and state playoff games. We haven't seen those parameters as of yet, but we just wanted to give the board a heads up that as of right now, regional and state playoff games for all the sports are scheduled. They've not been canceled and they've not been wiped off the calendar. We just want to put it in front of your eyes to know that there will be requests for that. For example, January 16th will be the cross-country state finals and it was going to be in Kernville, it's been switched today to Charlotte, Irish Park. And I don't think we could expect our athletes to drive there in the morning, jump out, run, and then drive back home. And I think Mr. King, athletic director Franklin High School, said that the 2A, 1A cross-country championships will be held in the morning, so that'll make it even harder. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Mr. Woody, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it pretty well, Mr. Gibbs. Again, we're just trying to wait and see if they'll move some of these events closer to us so we don't have to travel so far, but the cross-country be one, probably looking at swimming and diving, I think is another one, it's going to be a little bit later, regardless of see what our restrictions are at that time.
And if I'm understanding right, guys, we have not received any more really, any more information other than just tentative dates at this time, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so anything else? Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good, thanks for the update, I'm sure we'll be hearing more as we move closer to those times. Next on the agenda is fundraising requests, first up is Franklin High School, I think they have an athletic department that'll fund me. Mr. Woody, obviously I think you approved, you were in favor of this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, with us not having gate revenue this year, the FSPN Sports Networks is going to run a thing on their broadcast that gives the fans opportunity to donate to the high school athletic fund.
And that would be for the broadcasting or will it be for other monies going to the athletic department?
It'll be going to the athletic department only, sir.
Okay. The part of the deal, so that would also help us with the broadcast because of the circumstances, people can listen in, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Any questions? Any board members have any questions?
Nope.
All right, we'll approve the fundraiser request in mass. So next was South Macon Elementary School, a book fair, I know, I don't think I saw Allison, she's here.
Sure.
This is a standard thing you have every year, isn't it Allison?
Yes, sir. We just won't open it up to the whole school at one time, they'll come in by class, they're cohorts.
Okay. And then the PTO strawberry sale, again, isn't that something you've done in the past also?
Yes, sir, we did it last year, so the same company we're using.
Obviously you were happy with them, you wouldn't be going back, I would assume. Any board member have any questions, speaking of Mr. Woody or of Allison?
Move, we approve as accepted. Accepted approved.
We have a motion that we approve the request as submitted, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any other discussion, questions? All right, I'll ask for a roll call, Missy, your vote would be?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
All the rest of board members, aye also? That'll be unanimous, all, unanimous, go five, five oh. Policy, Franklin's High School dive team rental facility?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you guys remember, we signed a contract with Franklin Fitness Center to provide facilities for the swim team to practice and have meets. This is the same thing, but with the Asheville Y, I think it's YMCA, they have diving facilities in Asheville and they charge us a nominal fee to use their facilities. I believe if that's correct, it's $439 per season, not an exorbitant amount, but we just want to put it in front of you guys to approve and for that you know what we're doing.
So, I hate to sound dense, Todd, but is this for divers only or is this for the entire swimming team?
No, it's for the divers only.
And we have done this in the past?
Because the swim team practices at the fitness center.
Okay, so why are we no longer being using the fitness center for their practice? Why would they be going to? This is new, correct? We haven't used?
No, we've done this before, this is for the diving equipment, so they can actually dive instead of, the fitness center only has laps, lanes, or swimming laps.
Okay.
In the past? In the past, they've traveled to Clemson, I believe, haven't they, Mr. Woody?
Did something happen?
Yes, sir, we used to go to Clemson and Clemson did away with their dive team and did away with that program, but last year we went to Asheville to a club out there, I can't remember the name of it, and then this came up this year, but it's for the divers and the dive is part of the swim team, we just don't have any facilities in our area to practice that with.
Have we gotten a quote from the Health and Fitness Center, Mr. Gibbs, or Mr. Woody, about the cost for the swim team to use those facilities this year, or will we be able to do so?
We've already, we signed that contract, we are using the fitness center for the swim team.
We had signed that earlier, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I do have one final question, Mr. Gibbs, you indicated when you were just saying you thought the charge would be like $400 or so?
I don't have the contract in front of me, I was trying to do that off the memory, for just the diving facilities.
Based on what I'm looking at, it says up to $1,600 just for that part of it, is that accurate?
No, that is, from what I understand, that is the cost to the conference schools or number of schools that then are the YMCA divided up amongst the number of swimmers on the team.
Okay.
I have the contract in front of me, Angie, do you have that? Can you? I don't have the contract.
Todd, Todd, I'm sorry, I'll interrupt you, I'm good, John just showed me, I didn't see it, I probably just didn't pick it up on him, he just showed me the part, so just ignore the question, I'll see where, I'll solve the figure, I'm fine, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions other than me making issues? All right. You have a request then that we approve the use and the funding for the dive team to use the facility, do I hear, do I hear a motion? So move. Have a motion that we accept the rental contract, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, so again, doing a roll call, all in favor, signify by the saying aye. Missy?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Board members in the presence, all ayes, again, thank you all. Curriculum and instructions, none at this time, Dr. Baldwin, is that still correct?
Yes, sir.
Building and grounds are 2021, 2020-21, inclement weather procedures, have both Mr. Gibbs or Mr. Baldwin, so who's going to, who do we turn to?
Todd, do you want to go ahead and explain how we handle inclement weather calls and then we'll go into the changes for this year?
Yes, sir, I will. First of all, Nantahala and Highlands are, because they can experience their own set of weather circumstances, those principals up there in communication with Dr. Baldwin determine what kind of schedule they'll be on separate from the Franklin area. The Franklin area, when we get inclement weather here, I call, I have numbers for the North Carolina DOT maintenance shed, I call them, also have a number for non-emergencies for the May County Dispatch, I'll also call them. They've also divided up the Franklin area amongst me and bus garage employees and Dr. Baldwin to look at the roads in particular areas in the Franklin area. I live down the south side of the Franklin area, down Auto, Skeeter, I'm going to ride those roads, we've got a bus garage employee lives out in Colstages, he'll be looking at Buck Creek, Walnut Creek, Elige, Mr. Lynch lives out in the northern end of the county, he'll be looking at roads out in Burnetown, we've got another bus garage employee who's out in Cowee Valley. So anyway, we just, we haven't divided up and no matter what time we get worried that there may be inclement weather, we start riding those roads, I start calling North Carolina DOT, maintenance shed and dispatch in communication with Dr. Baldwin, and we're also in communication with Morgan Cave, manager of emergency services, and we try to make, if it's the, if the inclement weather is overnight, we try to make a call as close to 5:00 AM as possible to keep early buses from getting out on roads that probably are not safe. We run about 2,300 miles each and every day with our buses in the May County area, there's no way the handful of people that I just mentioned plus a few more can be on every single road in the county. What I've found my five years of doing it, there are certain roads that present certain problems because of either being shaded by a mountain or being shaded by trees, vegetation. We usually go to those places first, doesn't mean that other parts of the county, other parts of the Franklin area are, could be in trouble. Just for example, this morning, we had some workers here who live out at the base of Cowee Mountain, they experienced a storm with wind and rain, in south of town, where I live, five miles south of town, we just got a little bit of rain, and as you all know, snow does that also. Dr. Baldwin, what I'd leave out?
I think you covered it pretty well, Mr. Gibbs, I would just add that, as you pointed out, we, nearly impossible for us to travel the 2,300 miles that our buses travel every night in order to check the roads for possible hazards. The reality is, from the middle of November until late March, we can have icy spots throughout the county. You know, we try to operate schools when we can safely do so and we try to have a delayed schedule or cancel schools when the road conditions dictate that. Fortunately for us, over the past 10, 10 months or so, we've gotten more accustomed and better able to provide remote instruction, so this year, in the event that we do have inclement weather that causes us to cancel school to face-to-face instruction, we will be opening schools for remote instruction on those days. This will prevent us from needing to make up school on Saturdays over spring break or add days to the school year. While we won't be able to do this on every occasion, we will use this to prevent makeup days in 2021. Board members have any questions? We'll have a press release for the media.
That's pretty much what we've been doing, so I hope people understand, we can't always be correct, just make the best call that we can with the information we have at that time, so with the main motive, keep it, keep institutions safe, we go from there. All right. Anything else, Dr. Baldwin?
No, sir.
Board members?
No.
And moving on, next is business and finance, Angie, fund redistribution for Franklin High School?
Yes, this is for the fundraiser that they do every year and this is just taking $1,508 from the fundraising account and putting it into the band account, which is the profit from the sale.
And, and then, entertaining motion, we approve the fund redistribution as requested? So move. Have a motion, we approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, somebody saying aye. Aye. Missy?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Thank you, again. That passes. Budget amendments, Angie, let's do all we got, looks like four, we'll do all of those in bulk.
Okay. First one is state, we do have what looks to be an additional revenue of $591,203.72. None of this is revenue that was not expected, it's just come in a little bit later than it normally does. We do have $136,394.37 of that is in PRC 045, if you can, I don't know if that's up on the screen or not, there, but you can, that was the bonus, the teacher bonuses were paid $350 in October, and that's the money that the state allotted, whatever we spent based on our certified salaries, certified bonuses, excuse me, that's what the state gave us, and that was our total on that one. Any questions on state?
No, I think so.
Local, there's no additional revenue on local, that's just moving it, most of that is PRC 009 and that's the benefit category that we pay out, and that's annual leave and longevity, and it's just benefited at the beginning of the year in one account, and I'm just moving it to where it's actually been spent up to this point. The next one, federal, there's also no additional revenue in that, I'm just moving that to where it's been spent, some of the Title I money, it gets put in supplies and materials and some principals elect to move that into categories for tutoring or other areas within their Title I budget, and Josh approves that, and then that's what that is, those amendments are for that reason. The capital outlay, these are the projects that you all voted and approved on last month. So this is the band equipment, the intercom system at South Macon, the cafeteria tables at Macon Middle School, and we have some cafeteria equipment at Highlands, Macon Middle School, and Nantahala, we have some floor cleaning equipment at East Franklin and Mountain View, the HVAC system at Cartuga J and Franklin High School, and some carpet and tile repairs at Franklin High School and Nantahala. So those are in a lift for the maintenance department, and those are budgeted, that's just what you approved last month. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions on any of the budget amendments, state current expense, federal or capital outlay?
No, move, we accept as presented.
Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve as presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Is it Missy?
No.
Oh, Hillary, thank you. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor, somebody saying aye. Aye. Missy?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Thank you. I will chastise John if we get finished from making me do that, by the way, just so y'all know. Highland School, 21 calendar changes, Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jetter at Highlands is concerned about COVID-19 cases in Highlands as well as the number of students and staff that will be traveling out of town for Christmas break, and is concerned that he will see an increase in positive cases after Christmas, and preemptively has requested that school begin up there on January the 5th, 6th, and 7th in remote, so that students will not be on campus, so that students will not be on campus on those three days, it will be remote instruction.
And I think you are in agreement with that, Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? So we have a move with the change as described by Dr. Baldwin, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? And Hillary, you were aware, you felt like this was, was a good move, correct?
I did, I spoke with Principal Jetter about this last week, and I do think this is a good step to keeping school open longer, sacrificing these three days, hopefully. I think he had made a good case for that.
Good, okay. Have a motion, any other discussion? All in favor, will be signify on aye. Missy?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And all the members here?
Aye.
Awesome, so move. Next, Board of Education meeting schedule, I think that was sent out, I also had a link, the proposed schedule, we've had a chance to look at it, are there any, as we talked about, I know I was discussing with Hillary, this is just our tentative, obviously if we have any conflicts on the tentative, we will make adjustments, our goal is always to make it available to any board member, the best we can, that they will be able to attend the meeting. But those, these are the proposed dates, are there any questions, any conflicts anyone might know of at this time, board members?
Nope.
I looked through my packet, but I didn't see the dates.
I don't think it was in the packet, it was actually attached to the agenda when it was sent out, Hillary.
I'm in the document from Tim?
Yes.
It's got the agenda and all the pursuant pages, but I didn't see a list of dates, I was looking for that earlier today.
Okay.
Do the board members have it?
Aye, it was on mine, it was, it was attached onto the agenda that?
I have no plans, so I'm sure it's fine.
Okay, would you like me to just read those out, Hillary, quickly?
Sure, again, I really have no plans.
Okay, what we're looking at would be, if you remember, we tried to meet on the fourth Mondays, unless there's some things, so tentative would be January 25th, February 22nd, March 22nd, April the 26th, May the 24th, June the 28th, July 26th, August 16th, that was actually moved up, I think there were some conflicts, that's been moved up a week, so August 16th, September 27th, October 25th, November 15th, and December 13th.
Thank you, Jim, nothing stands out to me as a conflict.
I will mention that the September 22nd, or 27th, excuse me, meeting, we hope that we'll be able to visit Highlands on that day, if we get some releases of the pandemic, and then, Missy, the November 15th, we're tentative scheduled, we'd like to come over to Nantahala for that one.
Sounds good.
All right, so that's the tentative, but we do need to, I think, adopt that, so I would entertain a motion at this time?
Before that, I expect the cake on the 13th of December. Since that's my birthday, I'll be sold in, I won't come.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to accept the present.
We have a motion to accept the tentative agenda.
I'll second.
We have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, Missy?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Other board members?
Aye.
So moved.
Renee is on the meeting and she texted me and said that she will resend that link to all the board members.
Okay, and if you heard what Dr. Baldwin said, Miss, Renee will resend that out so everybody can make a copy of it and have it for your, for your information. COVID-19 updates, Dr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try to share my screen to give you these updates. And this is real-time information from Julie Rogers, who updates this. So it is real-time. As of this afternoon, can all the board members see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. As of this afternoon, we have 10 students in our system who have tested positive, no students at Cartuga J, none at East Franklin, seven at Franklin High School, one at Highland School, none at Iowa Valley, none at Macon Early College, two at Macon Middle School, none at Mountain View Intermediate, none at Nantahala, none at South Macon, none at Union Academy. We do have 85 students currently under quarantine. Additionally, we have three staff positive at Cartuga J, one staff member at East Franklin, one at Franklin High School, two at Macon Middle School, and we also have 19 staff who are currently under quarantine. And if you remember, last week, these numbers are pretty similar, we've got, we now have one more student, or actually one more student and staff member have, that has tested positive than last week, I believe our numbers last week were 16, and we also had 21 staff last week who were under quarantine total. So our numbers are slightly improved over last week with respect to the number of staff that we have available to us. But I do have Macon County Health Director Kathy McGaughy in this meeting and would like to turn it over to her for some information, I know that the county's numbers, based on what I received from Jimmy Villier today, have increased considerably over the weekend. Ms. McGaughy, if you'll give me just a chance, just a second to stop sharing this and put you back up on the screen, do the board members have any questions about the information that I've just shared with you?
Nope.
Hillary, Missy?
No, I have none.
Okay, can you see, can you see the board members now?
Kathy?
Kathy, are you ready to speak?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So, yes, talking with Chris today, we are seeing? So, yes, talking with Chris today, we are seeing an uptick, uptick in, in positive cases throughout the community, and I've expressed some concerns with school being in session face-to-face right now. Of course, we're seeing some transmission, or most of the transmission is happening in the community, it is, it's not necessarily in the schools, however, we are seeing an increase in the positivity rate, and are looking at how that's going to impact the school system. I think we've come to the conclusion that, that we, we're going to take this on a day-by-day basis and be in contact and look at the numbers to see if it's necessary to, at that point, go virtual. We've had 45 positive cases today, it's the most positives that we've had in one day, we're up to 123 active cases as of today. So we're, we're, I've got a concern, my medical director, Dr. Dunehurst, is here with me. I think you're going to see the, looking at the county alert system, that we're probably, we're definitely going to turn orange, if not red, very soon. And that, you know, they take into consideration the, the positivity rate, as well as the cases per 100,000, and the impact on the hospital. So we definitely are not heading in a good direction. I really would like to put out information about wearing masks, stay, you know, looking at doing Christmas differently this year, and, and doing what we can to keep this surge from having a, a bad impact on our community.
Thank you, Kathy, and, and to speak to that, of course, as you know, we're currently operating on a virtual or remote learning situation at Cartuka J Elementary, and Kathy, sorry, could you mute, I think I'm getting, there you go, thank you. We're operating remotely at Cartuka J currently, as a result of some key staff members having been exposed and testing positive at, at that school. And we're just reopening Macon Middle School to virtual, or to face-to-face instruction after two or three days of virtual learning due to staff quarantines and positive tests. We will not hesitate to close one or more schools, depending upon the number of cases at either of those locations. If it's a situation where we have staff who are quarantined or exposed, due to exposure or positive test results, we'll certainly go remote at those locations. And additionally, to add to what Mr. Jetter at Highlands has proposed and is moving forward with on January 5th, 6th, and 7th, we'll be in contact, the school system will be in contact with the Health Department over Christmas break, and should we see an increase in cases over Christmas break, I hope that parents understand that we may reopen schools on January the 5th as a district in remote instruction. A number of school systems are already considering that across the state, and if our numbers here in Macon County dictate that we need to do that as a result of Christmas break, then I'll, with consult, with consultation with you, we'll make that change on January Any questions?
Board members?
Nope.
Kathy, could I ask you one question, you may not know the information on this, are you, what, do you have any information on the, our hospital as far as capacity or what they're seeing there with COVID cases by chance?
The recent information that I've seen is that they are seeing an increase in, inpatient need, and they're not, they are not at capacity. However, you know, we, we don't have, we have one large hospital system, and it, we don't have the number of beds that some of the more metropolitan areas have.
Yes.
So a surge in our area, it wouldn't take much to put them at capacity. Our, our biggest fear is, is pushing them to their limits, and we don't want to do that.
Correct. Okay. Well, thank you, that's, I think it's important to people here to understand that, I see, Hillary has her hand up.
I do have a question about the positivity rate, is the Health Department able to track that amongst school staff and students? And is that rate aligning with what you see in the community?
We, we don't have the positivity rate necessarily broken out for the school system, our current positivity rate is 9%, where a week and a half ago, it was at 4.5%. So we're, we are definitely seeing an increase there. We're gonna, you know, we just got a lot of concerns.
And I think those concerns are valid. I will point out or ask you, Kathy, to this point in the school year, we've had 748 quarantines of students based on exposure to other students who have tested positive, based on exposure to staff who, who might have tested positive. In those 748 cases of quarantine, has the contact tracing that has been done as a result of those positive cases in our schools, has that turned up any transmission between staff and student, or student to staff?
As we've talked about, we've, you know, there's no way of knowing for sure, there's a few cases, I would say it's less than a handful, that where we had suspicion of any exposure in positive cases as a result of anything happening in the school system, overwhelmingly, the majority of what we're seeing is exposure and infection happening in the community. It's, the schools are doing a great job as far as following the, the protocols, we just reiterate to keep wearing your mask, it's the one thing that we know makes a difference in keeping your distance from, you know, from each other.
Thank you, Kathy, I, you know, and I, certainly we're concerned about the safety of our staff, the safety of our students, not only while they're at school, but while they will be at home over Christmas break. And as you said, it's really important that we continue off those social distancing protocols, even when we're not at school, because what we're, we're not seeing any transmission or any evidence of transmission as a result of the contact tracing at schools, COVID-19 is definitely present in our schools.
Yes.
We're definitely one big family, and we're, we are definitely, you know, hoping that what we do, we can mitigate this in our community, and Christmas might look a little different this year, and, and that's okay, because we'll get through it, and we'll see another Christmas.
And that being the key thing you said, Kathy, hopefully we'll be able to make it where people can see another Christmas, that's, should be, that should be probably the most important thing on everybody's minds at this time and time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Board members, anything else while we have Kathy? Any, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Kathy, again, on behalf of taking your time, I know it's getting late, but thank you for taking the time to share with us, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Dr. Baldwin, coming events?
Yes, sir.
Well, let me repeat, you don't have anything else on COVID at this time updates, do you?
No, sir.
Share, okay. Next is coming events?
Yes, sir, as you know, Cartuka J School will be on remote instruction for the remainder of this semester. Obviously, we're watching these numbers across the school system, if we see an uptick in cases, or if we have staff who are quarantined as a result of positive or, or exposure to a positive case, we may have to adjust that for other schools between now and December the 18th. But December the 18th is a remote learning day for all the schools in the county. December the 17th will be the last day of face-to-face instruction, and then January the 4th will be a teacher work day. January the 5th is scheduled to be our first day of face-to-face instruction after the Christmas break. Obviously, we're, we're very concerned about the number of cases that we've seen in the community over the weekend, and we'll be watching those numbers again over Christmas break, and if, if we're seeing that type of activity in the community, we'll have to assume that our staff and our students may be in jeopardy of, of being under quarantine, and it may be the right decision for us to preemptively do as, as Highlands has already done, and open school virtually in order to keep our students and staff safe. Of course, December the 25th is Christmas Day, and we certainly wish everyone a safe and happy Christmas.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is more going into closed session, and for that, we turn to our attorney, Mr. Heaney, if you will, if you will, John, please lead us into the statute that will be...
Mr. Chairman, the reason for the closed session is one set out in GS 143-18.1181 to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information pursuant to GS 115C-319 through 321, as you have in the last couple of meetings, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you that other than approving the personnel report we're going to discuss after coming back into open session, we don't anticipate any need for any further action, so we'll close the live portion of the meeting to all the board members and come out and just enjoy, so that'd be my anticipation, that's the basis.
So, exactly, at this time, we're living at, Bobby here, we don't anticipate anything coming out, so like I said, we'll be stopping the live streaming. I want to say, thanks to everyone that listened in, we appreciate it, and Bobby, thank you for making it available, we've had some, a few things happen in the school system that we're glad you're here to be able to do that, so. At this time, I'll take a motion, all in favor going into closed session, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. In your post.
Merry Christmas, happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, at this time, then the board will go into closed session.
Hillary, Missy, I'll need to send you guys a, a new link, so give me just a second, and it will pop up in your email.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you all for watching, I'm shutting down the live feed and won't be bringing it back tonight.
I'll send you a link from now on, where you can, you can attend as you've done that. We left you off that link today.